Good evening. I now call the Board of Education regular meeting to order at 5:30 PM. Is there a motion to approve the agenda for Monday, September 22, 2025?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Tonight, we have two public hearings for the Cedar Rapids Community School District. The first one is a new elementary school on the Van Buren Elementary School Site Project, bid issuance number two. And the second one is the new elementary school on the Hoover Elementary School Site Project, bid issuance number two. Board Secretary Schulte, have we received any written correspondence related to these public hearings?
We have not received any correspondence.
Thank you. Do we have anyone who has requested to address the board this evening regarding the first published hearing relating to the new elementary school on the Van Buren Elementary School Site Project, bid issuance number two?
We do not.
Thank you. The aforementioned public hearing is now closed. Do we have anyone who has requested to address the board this evening regarding the second published hearing relating to the new elementary school on the Hoover Elementary School Site Project, bid issuance number two?
We do not.
The aforementioned public hearing is now closed. Now, we will hear from those who have requested to address the board. Board Secretary Schulte, do we have any requests this evening?
We have no requests this evening.
Oh, my goodness. No one wants to talk to us. Okay, super and we will have our superintendent's report. I give the meeting over to Dr. Grover.
Thank you, President Garlock. Tonight, we're going to start with our student spotlights. And this evening, we're honored to recognize three students here to present each spotlight or area chief of schools. We will start with Area Two is going first.
This evening, we are honored to recognize Emile, a remarkable fifth grader at Cleveland Elementary. Emile came to Cleveland as a newcomer in second grade. At the time, he spoke no English. He has worked hard to increase his language. He is currently reading 122 words per minute. That's awesome. And is almost proficient. Yeah. They are confident at Cleveland that he will reach benchmark by this winter. That is such a wonderful accomplishment. Great job, man. He is a true role model at Cleveland and helps to welcome our newcomers to the building, is what Cleveland reported. And Emile is joining us this evening. Congratulations, Emile. Keep up the great work.
I think we do have his family in the audience tonight. Family, if you stand away for us so we can congratulate you as well. Thank you.
I have the honor to have a student spotlight for Jane Petrus. Jane Petrus, Franklin seventh grader, is one of a kind. She is an authentic leader who encourages and models responsibility, respect, and safety. Jane exceeds expectations when working independently, cooperatively, and collaboratively. She is a role model scholar athlete who is aiming high for success now and in the future. Jane is always striving to not only continually learn, but is also constantly helping her peers, whether it is understanding difficult concepts or just getting back on track. Speaking of track, Jane is also a member of the cross-country team. She is always following the rules of Franklin, whether in or out of the classroom. She is a role model to others around her. Congratulations, Jane.
Our high school student spotlight is Divya Ramadugu. Divya is a senior at Kennedy High School. She is one of the most college-ready students in the district, having taken 10 AP classes prior to her senior year and five more this year. She is a three-time national qualifier in the National Speech and Debate Association, National Speech Debate Tournament, and a leader of the Kennedy National Honor Society. She is also a Kennedy High School Model, United Nations President, and has been selected as MUN Best Delicate for her leadership skills. Divya was one of just 16 students worldwide selected for the World Food Prize Borlaug-Rouen International Internship, conducting research in Kenya on global issues in science and agriculture. She was also recognized as one of only 15 Iowa high school juniors chosen as the Hoover Uncommon Student, honoring leadership and service. Our communications team will be sharing more on her accomplishments in an upcoming publication. Congratulations to Divya.
Thank you, and congratulations to all of our students. Tonight, I'd like to start with priority area number one, safe and secure learning. I want to highlight our new cell phone policy. It is going very well this year. We're seeing really positive results. Students are following the policy, and teachers are able to focus more on instruction without having to interrupt learning as often for cell phone distractions. This is not only supportive of a more productive learning environment, but it also helps to create a safer and secure school setting. In fact, this has already caught local attention. KCRG recently did a story on our policy. Let's take a look at that story now.
A look and a listen?
It's been a month since Kennedy High School students have been banned from using their phone at any time during the school day. Senior Emily Brant says it's been an easier adjustment than she thought it would be.
Since nobody else is really pulling out their phones, you're not as tempted to?
Kennedy's principal says students are adjusting well to the new rule. He says about 10 to 20 phones are confiscated every day.
It's been very surprising to see students in the cafeteria refraining from using the phone during lunch. It's been very surprising, even the very first day of school, to not see cell phones in the hallway.
Klein says the new rule did concern some parents because they feared they wouldn't be able to communicate with their child during the day, especially with the recent national school shootings. But many students have found a way.
I kind of pull out my current book and email. That's what I would do. That's how I communicate with my mom during the day now.
Well, that is the reality of the situation. We definitely want our parents to be informed and our students to be, say thank you to our parents for your cooperation and support during this change, as well as our students for being so responsible. Next, I'll move over to priority area number two, Prepare for Life. I'd like to take a moment to highlight the ribbon cutting for the Medical Science Academy at McKinley Steam Academy. This project has been a true investment in our students, giving them access to the environment that sparks curiosity and supports their hands-on learning. What a wonderful celebration of partnership with Unity Point. This celebration was attended by students, staff members, just a wonderful display of the talents and skills over at McKinley during our ribbon cutting. Thank you to our Board of Education for all the representation that was there. I know that means a lot to our staff, students, and families. This project, it went from concept to ribbon cutting in just four short months. So I definitely want to say thank you to Chad and his team for helping that vision to come to life and really being prepared so our students could enjoy and explore learning in a new way once they came back for this school year. I also want to just take a special moment to recognize Ted Olander, who is the coordinate coordinator over at McKinley. And this has certainly been a labor of love for him, a lot of hard work and dedication on behalf of our administration and our staff. As we think about partnerships, partnerships are truly making a difference here in the Cedar Rapids Community School District as we prepare our students for college and career. Next, I turn my attention over to Metro Steam Academy. They have been working with several partners in our community. Tonight, I'd like to share about a few. Last Monday, they hosted Nathan Marso and sampled some of his hot sauce products. I didn't get any, and talked about a future retail collaboration. Last Tuesday, they also hosted Elam Amiri. He's a Dutch astrophysicist who is spending three weeks in Cedar Rapids as part of the United States Department Fellowship Program. Students will be working to collaborate on space communication projects. This is really exciting when we're talking about real world and students exploring careers. Last Wednesday, our students were in full salsa production at New Bull City Market. Many of you are familiar with our students selling their salsa each year at the market, but this year marks their first opportunity that the New Bull City Market will be hosting our students in their very own space for the Metro Steam Academy to have a full retail shop from the end of October through the end of December. Thank you to New Bull City Market for allowing our students to participate in entrepreneurship while they're still in high school. Finally, our Metro students, they just completed a project for the Kirkwood Regional Center in Corville. Kirkwood called upon Metro, okay, all the way in Corville, to create a stand for their Herky On Parade that features a literary theme. I think it's wonderful that our partners are allowing our students to see what's possible right here in our region. Priority area number four, physical responsibility. Last week, we hosted a ceremonial groundbreaking for the renovation of Harrison Elementary School. What a wonderful day to have our students involved in this event, a marked and exciting step forward as we invest in a modern, innovative learning environment for our students, working hand in hand with our community. We are especially proud of the cost savings that we achieved through this project. The winning bid, which will be on our consent agenda tonight, it came in at almost $8 million less than the estimated cost. This allows us to include alternates such as green space, which we are so excited about, and additional playground equipment for our students. Thank you, and that concludes my report tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Grover. And I have to speak about the green space. I'm so excited that we are finally having green spaces included in our building projects. The outside is also a classroom, and these green spaces will help with that. So that's wonderful news. Director Byers, I believe you have the staff highlight.
I do. I am going to be cheering about Luann Baseman. Am I saying that correctly? Okay, wonderful. Who is with Printing and Graphics Supervisor. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I had the pleasure of meeting. There was the end of the school year bash at Kingston, and I was admiring one of these lovely brochures and like saying out loud how impeccable the graphics were and whatnot. Anyway, lo and behold, she was standing right next to me, and I had the pleasure of meeting her. So thank you for that moment. Our schools could not function without you, Luann Baseman, and your incredible team in Printing and Graphics. With 15 years of dedicated service to the district, Luann has become the trusted face of her department, known by everyone for her care, work ethic, and servant leadership. Luann and her team go above and beyond to make sure staff and schools have what they need, from ensuring CKLA materials were distributed quickly to supporting countless last-minute projects with professionalism and a smile. She is a true partner to teachers, staff, and leaders, whether it is catching orders before they're delayed, enhancing poster designs, or bringing creative ideas to life. She and her team do it all. Luann is also a trusted person who never fails to see us, hear us, and support us as human beings. She is the go-to for encouragement, a listening ear, and the best dad jokes, creating an uplifting and encouraging atmosphere for those lucky enough to work alongside her. Her impact is felt everywhere, from the wrapped holiday deliveries that bring joy in December to the behind-the-scenes work that makes staff recognition programs possible. Every colleague who works with Luann has only good things to say. She's quick to help, collaborative, positive, and always focused on making others' jobs easier. We are deeply grateful for Luann's commitment and leadership. Thank you, Luann. You make a difference every single day.
Congratulations, Luann, and thank you for everything you do for us. Appreciate it. Director Newman, I believe you have a report from the Academics and Achievement Committee?
I do. Yoohoo, down here. So I have the report from the Academic and Achievement Core Committee. So we met on September 15. Dr. Hobson and the Academic and Achievement Core Committee introduced a new core diploma pathway for high school students with credit deficiencies, requiring only 30 credits instead of the traditional 40, and covering essential subjects along with two electives, leading to a regular CRCSD diploma from the school of which they're part of that community, which I think is really important and I'm really excited about. Updates included efforts for a finalized high school program of studies by December 8, refining existing courses before the launch of new pathways in the 2027-28 school year and refining those new pathways for the 27-28 school year. Nicole Brown also discussed new math legislation for K-6 student screenings and intervention protocols. And Adam Zimmerman highlighted transparency in goal tracking with tools like a Tableau Dashboard, and also an exciting agreement with CoCollege for full tuition for qualifying pathway completers. Additionally, Dr. Hobson reported on onboarding paired educators for special education and positive developments in behavioral support initiatives. Jennifer Van Fleet addressed attendance, coding improvements, and the successful implementation of the new cell phone policy, as we heard here tonight, emphasizing clarity and support for families addressing absenteeism. And I would just like to add to Dr. Grover's report around the cell phone policy. When I'm talking to educators out in the district, I've heard phrases like night and day, huge improvement, not as hard as we thought, and the kids are also mildly okay with it.
Thank you, Director Newman. Director Tominski, I believe you have the Policy Committee report. Director Tominski is joining us via Google Meet.
Confirming you can hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, perfect. At its September 11 meeting, the Policy Compliance Oversight Committee heard from Chad Schumacher about a proposed operating procedure for naming and/or renaming facilities or portions of facilities. With the upcoming construction projects, he identified the need for such an SOP standard operating procedure. While that proposed SOP would not be adopted into the board manual, it is based upon and consistent with the board manual in order to ensure input from all parties as well as compliance with the board manual. The committee's input will be used for revisions. The committee also reviewed existing board regulation 512.01 on staff use of cell phones in light of the recent policy adopted restricting student use from bell to bell. Committee members felt the current provision is clear the district employees are not allowed to use phones in a manner that is disruptive to instruction. As with all board manual provisions, this can be reviewed at another time if problems develop. The committee then discussed proposed change to policy 1008, which is public records, to bring it into compliance with state law that does not specify a timeframe within which records must be produced. Last, the committee discussed whether and how the district might amend Regulation 602.09, which is high school student athlete transfers within CRCSD, so as to address unique situations not governed by state law or the Iowa High School Athletic Association. Dr. Grover offered her input based on discussions with families as well as the Activities Council, made up of building administrators and activity directors from buildings. This discussion will continue, and that concludes the report.
Thank you, Director Tominski. I want to add, Director Tominski and I had the opportunity two weeks ago to attend a federal advocacy event in Washington, DC, and we would like to just provide a short update on that experience. We spent the first day that we were there in sessions, learning from the experts about what was happening on Capitol Hill. Very interesting panel discussions from the entire political spectrum to give us a perspective on the budget that is currently being negotiated. There's a proposal in the House, there's a proposal in the Senate. They have to figure out how those two proposals will mesh together. It is the budget for the 2026 fiscal year. While we were there, and Director Tominski, jump in here, we did have the opportunity to attend an appropriations committee meeting. It was very enlightening. Director Tominski, you want to tell the folks about that committee hearing?
I was happy that the timing worked out for us to be able to sit in on a committee meeting. As many people know, the House is proposing about a 15% decrease in education funding, so I thought it was very appropriate for us to take time to sit in on that House Appropriations Committee meeting. That is a meeting that lasted all day. I think we saw President Garlock, that meeting didn't get over until about 6:00 PM. We had a tight schedule that day, so we were able to sit in, I think, for the first 45 minutes, hear from the chair and from the minority lead, leader on that committee. So lots of big things that they're talking about in DC that impact all of us directly. So again, I think it was a good opportunity for us, and I wish that we could have stayed longer to hear even more of that. But, you know, obviously, those meetings are online and available for others to see. So I would just urge people in the community to take a look at some of those discussions and the impact that they're going to have on education throughout the country and certainly in Cedar Rapids.
That same day as that committee hearing, the other thing that kept us busy was meeting with Senator Grassley and the staffs of Senator Ernst and Congresswoman Hinson. We were fortunate enough to be in the group that did meet with Senator Grassley. We spoke about funding for school meals because he is on the Agriculture Committee and has direct impact on that. We talked about preschool, as we always do. We talked about funding for special ed. Director Borcheting, this will be of particular interest to you. The IDEA legislation was originally to be funded at 40%. It is currently at 10%, so moving, not moving in the direction that we would like to see it move. So we had opportunity to speak to him directly, and then we also spoke to staff in the other offices. It was a very interesting experience. When you watch the news and you hear them talk about these budget negotiations that are happening right now in DC, please, as Director Tominski said, they are proposing a 15% cut in federal funds for education. And I don't think anyone in this room would tell you that we're overfunded right now. So please, if you are so inclined, call your representatives and let them know how you feel so they can represent their voters. Anything you want to add to that, Director Tominski?
I would, yeah, I mean, the first day was just a lot of logistics. We did get to hear from a few speakers that I think would be of interest to folks in the district. One was an academic officer with Code.org, so I think lots of schools have implemented computer science programming. Hour of Code is very common around the country and certainly has been done in our district for a number of years. They are working toward an hour of AI, which is in conjunction with computer science, so not to be seen as something separate, but to be something that builds upon computer science. So certainly came away really optimistic about the opportunity to do more of that within our district. And it's always great to hear from somebody like Bob Woodward, who has been reporting as a journalist for over 50 years. He was one of the keynotes. I think we gained a lot as a group from that. But tremendous opportunity for our district to be part of COSBA, National School Boards visiting DC, advocating on behalf of education. So I think it was a good use of a few days to be out there.
Thank you. Since we're talking about advocacy, I will just throw in a couple additional notes. We had a Urban Education Network meeting, UEN Steering Committee meeting last week, and the board may remember that we put together our legislative priorities and sent them off to the UEN. They presented us at the meeting last week with the draft of those legislative priorities. When we are in Des Moines for the conference in November, they will provide us with the final version of that. I can say that the priorities that we identified are very similar to the end product. There were a couple things that we ranked pretty high that turned out to be pretty low and vice versa, but generally, I think most of us are on the same page. Along with that, the Association of School Boards, IASB, if you noticed today in your email, they also sent out their legislative priorities. So please take a look at that document, and we will be adopting those legislative priorities also at that conference in Des Moines in November. And the last thing along that line is to remind the board that we do have a meeting set up with our area legislators on December 1 to talk about those legislative priorities. So give that some thought as to what we want to tell them when they head to Des Moines. So long board report. Any other board reports? Okay, very good. We shall move on. Moving on to our consent agenda, are there any items on which a director has a comment or question or requires the item be pulled from the consent agenda for a separate vote?
I would like to have the personnel report pulled for separate vote and/or discussion.
So Director Humbles, you would like that to be pulled for discussion and a vote separately?
Or a separate vote and/or discussion.
Okay.
So do I have to make a decision? So special vote?
Okay.
Which should lead to some type of discussion.
Okay, we can have a discussion without a separate vote, but if you prefer a separate vote, that's fine.
I think we need to have a separate vote.
Okay. Okay, so we will pull the personnel report for a separate vote. So first, we are going to deal with the rest of the consent agenda, and then we will do the personnel report.
Okay, thank you.
Do we, is there anything else that anyone wants to pull or comment on? Okay, very good. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the personnel report removed for a separate vote?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Okay, so the personnel report. Director Humbles, did you have a comment that you wanted to make?
I have a comment.
Okay. Do you have a comment, Director Humbles?
No, I'm going to defer it to you.
So this is just a board procedural comment. Upon examination, the board does not have policy, procedure, or regulation defining hiring practices during an organizational restructuring. This seems inconsistent with the policy and procedure regarding normal administrative hiring practices. Having a policy or procedure outlining hiring practices during restructuring will give the board the ability to ensure that actions are handled with transparency and the inclusion of all stakeholder voices. I encourage the board to examine developing this policy.
Thank you. Other comments? I do want to add, in regards to the personnel report, just to provide as much clarity as we can around the position of area chief of schools, I'd like to point out that the item on the personnel report regarding Riles Parker is limited to just bringing his pay in line with the other two area chiefs, just for sake of clarity. Other comments about the personnel report?
I believe it is also important to note that that pay was approved through the certified budget that was this spring.
Okay. Other discussion? Do we have a motion on the matter of the personnel report, which was removed from the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Stop, wait. Director Tominski, can you make an actual motion? Do you want to approve the personnel report?
I move that we approve the personnel report.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
I believe this is a roll call.
Yeah, it's a roll call.
Sorry, sorry.
It should be a roll call.
Roll. Did we get a second?
Yes.
Okay.
Director Tominski?
Aye.
Director Borcheting?
No.
Director Humbles?
Nay.
Director Byers?
Aye.
Director Newman?
Aye.
President Garlock?
Aye. Thank you. We have one item under administration. It's a request to the School Budget Review Committee, special education negative balance for the 2024-2025 school year. Are there any questions for Carlo before we vote on this?
I have a comment.
Sure.
And it is based on what you'd said earlier. So when the Individuals with Disabilities in Education Act was first passed in 1963, it was a...
So when the Individuals with Disabilities in Education Act was first passed in 1963, maybe 67, it was promised at a 40% funding from the federal government that has never been achieved. It's been 13% at the highest. Every school district in the state of Iowa, with the exception of eight, runs into a special education deficit annually, which requires us to apply to the SBRC for additional funding. So again, I think if we had funding that was promised at creation of the bill, that we would not be consistently in this place year after year.
Other comments? Do we have a motion to approve the Request for School Budget Review Committee's Special Education Negative Balance for the 2024-25 school year?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Tonight we will hear from Dr. Maura Hobson and update on the Instructional Empowerment Model of Instruction. I will turn it over to Dr. Hobson.
I have the honor to come back to you. I presented, I think, I don't know, spring sometime, May maybe, about the academic side of the instructional empowerment, specifically focused around the model of instruction. And I'm coming back to you to give you a little bit of update and talk a little bit about the impact it has on some of the behaviors and items happening in the classroom. And I asked Condra to come and share because if you remember, I highlighted both Kenwood and Cleveland in the spring, but only the Kenwood principal came. So I wanted to give Condra the same opportunity to share her thoughts and her, what's happening, the great things that are happening in her school. So as a reminder, our focus for the model of instruction is to create teaming classrooms, lessons aligned to standard and interdependent tasks. And if you remember, when we talk about teaming classrooms, we're talking about how students are engaged within their learning through having really strong discourse, conversations, collaborations, challenging and questioning each other. It's all about the opportunity for students to talk about what they're learning and to be able to support one another within that conversation. It has clear roles and responsibility, which is so important because we want to make sure every student has the opportunity to have their voice heard in the conversation, to feel that their opinion is valued, and that is all part of that teaming classroom structure. And it allows the students to have autonomy over their own learning because it gives individual think time, but it allows the time to also to share out and to support each other in their learning and to help each other if they're stuck versus always raising your hand or going to the teacher. The second piece is the lessons aligned to the standard. This is very important because we want to make sure that the lessons that are being presented are aligned to the content standards and that our students are getting the opportunity to really thrive under the, the content through the Iowa State Standards. The last piece is the interdependent task, which goes back into that teaming classroom role, where we're really looking at how do we utilize our planning within our PLCs for teachers to feel confident in developing tasks that, that have students have the ability to have a piece of the, piece of the task, bring it together, have conversations, and then come out together with that outcome, having that individual time to think about it, the conversation and the consensus to come together. I updated as of this morning. So as I did this last week, I think on Thursday, we were at 249 classrooms visited, but as of this morning, we're already at 410, just moving into our fourth main week. So I'm really excited about that. Leaders are getting into classrooms, really seeing the instructional happening, and that's important so we know what's happening and how we can continue to move forward in the I have a teacher, Lindsay Clyburn, in third grade, and I, I don't like to read slides, but I'm going to read it for the people who maybe can't quite see it. "The model of instruction has improved student behavior in my classroom by boosting engagement and increasing student participation. I have noticed students holding each other accountable by asking questions, encouraging each other to contribute equally, and supporting peers to stay on task. They don't want to let each other down." And really what I want to highlight in this quote, which I think is fantastic, is that we know when students are engaged, their brains are firing, and when their brains are firing, they're learning. And that's what we want. We want their brains firing through conversation, through questions and challenging, and really around those rigorous tasks that are aligned to the standards. Also that this is telling us that students are holding themselves and their peers, they're regulating their behavior between each other. This is a work in progress. Remember I said we have teachers in schools at all different levels, but we are definitely seeing this happening across the district. They're cheerleaders for each other. A lot of that social, emotional learning and that connectedness is happening, and we're seeing better attendance. So some of the celebrations that I want to talk about, and I know this is kind of small, but around some of the behaviors we're seeing. When we look at the 23-24 stats of our big five behaviors to 24-25, I wanted to highlight five schools that we kind of can talk about. And I, as again, I'm going to say, as we think about everything we've talked about, students engaging in their learning, holding each other accountable for their behavior, their learning, and the supporting of, of one another, is all factors into what we're seeing in the classrooms as we look at less referrals happening. So if we're looking at Cleveland, which we're going to highlight a little bit later, from 23-24 to 24-25, we saw a decrease of 27% in referrals. And in third grade specifically, we saw a 50% decrease. And again, I'm going back to, not all classrooms look the same, not all schools look the same because we're at a scaffolding and everybody's at a different spot, which is what we expect. But what we're seeing is moving in the right direction, and I'm super excited to see what's happening as we move forward this year. Franklin Middle School decreased by 24%. Sixth grade alone decreased by 30%. Harding Middle School decreased by 37. Sixth grade decreased by 38%. Van Buren decreased by 29%. Second grade decreased by 72%. And then McKinley decreased by 6%. Sixth grade, however, decreased by 29%. One of the things I want to point out though, that when I looked at the data, every single school, and the majority of them had two or more grade levels, but every single school had at least one grade level that had a decrease of at least 10%. So we're seeing, when students are engaged in their learning, we're seeing that their, the behaviors are changing in the classroom because they're engaged and they want to participate and they don't want to let anybody down. Just some great examples of what's happening already. These are all this year of happening in classrooms. You can see the summary map happening where they're all individual thinking, they're going to be coming together, sharing, and coming up with consensus. We're still using the digital platform, but they're being able to be engaged in the written form and be able to have that consensus. And again, another one for the summary map. All right, I'm going to turn it over to Condra. I guess you don't really, no.
I just included on our slide tonight, our instructional vision, and it is, "Teachers will provide teaming structures and facilitate, facilitate student conversations so that students engage in respectful discussions around standards aligned, learning tasks to deepen understanding." So we've already talked a little bit about that, but some highlights at Cleveland, we've had a redaction of major referrals by 27% from last year at this time. Increased ISAS scores, this is a huge celebration at Cleveland, we increased 14.36% just in literacy alone, and then our math increased by 11.49. Teaming had a lot to do with that. Our, our classroom structures have completely changed at Cleveland, getting into classrooms and seeing that with our students. Our current fourth graders are at 67.5% proficient to start the school year in literacy, and that is, that is huge. We have never had a class start that high at the beginning of the school year, so we're hoping we can get them to that 80%. We'll see. It'll be challenging, but we think we can do it. And that grade level specifically, our fourth graders, last year's third graders, have significantly decreased their referrals from this time last year. I do want to highlight some of the instructional strategies that we're doing that have, we worked really hard on our tier one practices as well over the last two, two and a half years. Mark can talk a little bit about that too. We worked really hard to get our PBIS structures in place so that kids were getting a much more safe environment. But adding in last year, our teaming structures, Rita's here tonight, our instructional coach, and Melissa, one of our fourth grade teachers, who had, this comes actually from Melissa's classroom, Mrs. Harz. And we have worked really hard on those team roles and making sure that they're implemented with fidelity. And if you look at the next picture over, they have the roll cards in the pictures, and they're making sure there's questions on them that those roles can ask, so the teacher is less in charge and just a facilitator. So the kids are much more in charge of their own learning. In most of our classrooms, when you go in, you will see slides up on the board. That was from a first grade classroom for story problems. You share with your group and answer. And while I was in there observing, that next to it is the learning target that the kids reviewed with the other kids. The teachers reviewed it once, and then the kids were going back and forth reviewing their learning target as first graders. And then over on the right, you'll see Mrs. Rouse, one of our first grade teachers, coaching one of the facilitators in her ear to ask the questions instead of the teacher asking all the questions. So we have it going all the way kindergarten through fifth grade at this point. And this is Mrs. Harz's classroom right here, like I said, and it's just, it's amazing to see the difference. We have less behavior coming out of the classroom because more kids are engaged in the instruction. And it's a direct, direct result of trying to get our teaming. And we are the middle level is what I would call it. We get, we're a guided school. I get those confused. And so I get coaching, and my coach goes in with me to the classrooms, and we do rigor walks together. And then Rita and I are able, she gets coaching on her look and learns, and then we're able to collaborate and see where we need to get teachers to go. And, and we have teachers that have reached all the, all the way up to the level eight. Am I right on that, level eight? Yeah, artifact eight. And then we've had some that are new this year. Our newer teachers are struggling a little bit, but they're, they're jumping on board quickly. So we are really excited about our data and we hope to see the increase just keep going up.
Thank you. You might want to stay up in case they ask you a question. All right, the last, I'm going to end it with another quote. Sorry, I put my glasses on. From Holland Egert in fifth grade. "I've seen more students take on leadership within their teams. I have also noticed that students will hold each, hold others in their group accountable. They are more apt to solve their own problems using norms and are beginning to embrace ideas that come from other team members, which makes them feel part of something." So I was really excited to see and hear about her comment about leadership because that's what we want. As we look at that profile of a graduate, we want the students to have that skill to become leaders within the classroom and holding each other accountable again. And who doesn't love that last piece? Make them feel part of something, which is so powerful. And you know, I'm going to end again with my agree, disagree card, and specifically looking at more to add or questions.
I have more to add.
Thank you.
Congratulations to the entire team. When the board looks at new initiatives and we take our vote and approve a new initiative, we know that sometimes there is some trepidation out there in the world. Change is difficult, and it's sometimes a little scary to adopt something new, new. This just shows, I think, we have data, we have results, that taking that risk and doing something proactive pays off. I am so proud of what I've just heard. Those score improvements are amazing. The behavior data is amazing. So just like kudos to you and your entire team. Thank you. Other questions, comments?
I have a question.
Director Newman?
Sure. So this is a really technical question for Mrs. Allred. So we talk a lot about our cultural framework, clarity, care, communication. So the technical part of this is like, when you think about your team, what's the vibe this year? That's the technical part.
Oh, what's the vibe? It's really positive. We have.
Could you go to the microphone? Microphone.
Sorry, I don't need a microphone, I'm very loud. It's, it's really great this year at Cleveland. We actually had really great training today. We actually did model of instruction today. Rita led that part, and then I led our paraprofessionals in the same practices. So in our, in our learning, we do the same, the same structure. So we had our mats out, the paraprofessionals reviewed their expectations that I gave them, they had to write things down. It's really a good vibe. We also had, added some extra programs this year, so it was a little bit of a challenge. We have two new special ed programs in our building, which brought about 22 staff members to Cleveland that were brand new. And it, it's going really great, and I hear nothing but positive things from people. Of course, we always have our moments, but the instructional framework has allowed kids to just be more independent and teachers to take some of that load off of them. And so they're really learning to give it over to the kids, which was really hard for Cleveland when we first started because giving up control could lead to behavior, and it was really hard at first for, for teachers to give up some of that control, and it's been going great. I, I think the vibe's great. I think these guys would agree.
Great. Well, congratulations. I'm, I too am super proud and very happy to, to hear that report.
Yeah, that's fantastic because sometimes 27% decrease, right? It may look a certain way, but feel a different way. So it's really nice to see those things go hand in hand. And congratulations. I was curious, so you, on one of the slides, you said every school had at least a 10% decrease in one grade? And then there were three or four that were sixth grade that were noted there? So is that where you see the highest decrease in behavior referrals in that sixth grade? Where, which grade levels do you see that, those higher numbers versus lower decreases? If you, do you understand where I'm coming from? Okay. Thank you, yes, yes.
Right. So I focus, we saw that, most of them were in sixth grade, some may have were between six and seven. But I focused on the sixth grade because that is such a challenging transition year. So that's really where we've been focusing in some of our transition years, and how do we support students to be engaged, to feel like they're part of something, and to see that transition of the behaviors decreasing, which shows us, you know, what kind of, where we want to go to make our students in sixth grade, especially transitions, feel more belonging.
Okay. And were you finding like the second highest decrease? Does it center somewhere else at another grade level?
I wouldn't say there wasn't, in the elementary, it would have been the next probably, and it kind of varied depending on, again, it kind of goes off of each school and where we saw pockets of those early implementers and the, the class, the grade levels that really were implementing. So depending on, like, it could be a third grade.
Well, I was going to add to that because our third, our third grade really going into fourth grade have decreased so much because we had two teachers in third grade that were heavily invested and getting a lot of coaching. And so I believe that their commitment has only made going into fourth grade better. So we have our fourth grade teacher here. And so you can see the difference between third and fourth. And so that specific class had a lot of decrease in behavior because of the engagement of our teachers.
That makes sense, yep.
And that's exactly why I pulled third grade, and I didn't know from Condra which grade level had the highest, and, but that was the one I pulled because it was the highest at Cleveland.
Okay, that makes sense. And just since there's teachers in the room, are, do we have feedback loops where people are showcasing challenges or, you know, documenting if there's anything along the way? It looks like it's all like that teaming structure, but is there other ways that we're gathering that information to make sure we're well-rounded?
So at the beginning of the year, we did a survey after the first PL. So we're taking that information and kind of going to share it out and kind of figure out our, some of our next steps of some of the areas that we're still seeing some challenges or barriers. And then we talk about it, and we get feedback every month from the principals about what's happening in their buildings, from their BLT teams, from all the observations. And we do learning with the principals, and this year we're doing very specific learning with principals and coaches around the feedback that we're getting.
Okay.
I also think there was an action step that our chiefs kind of did for our pre-service. So our kindergarten teachers were really kind of struggling with how to implement this within their structures. And so they brought in someone specifically, our teachers didn't go, but they specifically brought in someone to help with kindergarten and how we can implement these structures within kindergarten. So that was, okay, sorry, but that's how.
So we try and take the feedback we're getting and make the necessary changes to help reduce some of the barriers that we're seeing.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Director Borcheting?
Yeah, I just have, so just for, for the benefit of the public, so PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention Strategies. Okay, just, yeah, there's so many acronyms in such little time, right? So I just, I just have some questions about some, some data clarity. So we're comparing this year to last year, and was the referral criteria the same between both years?
Yes, I believe it was.
Okay. Are all schools using the same referral criteria?
I would say the majority of them are very similar. We've been working on the matrix to make that tighter. I can't say 100% everybody was using the same criteria, but there was expectations that were out there.
Right, right.
I can't say 100%, no.
Sure. And I mean, every building has its different culture and climate, you know, students are a little bit different. But I think when we're all using the same data, it allows us to share best practice. So thank you for that. And then my, my last question is, are we using any restorative practices for de-escalation that also lead to that decrease in major referrals? that also lead to that decrease in major referrals?
I think there's different aspects that definitely have helped with the decreasing in the referrals. I know with the DOJ agreement, we've put in some more structure, and you probably can talk to more strategically about what was happening in the classrooms. But I know as we move into this year, we've tightened up some of those trainings, making sure that's happening more often. So our hope is that even this year, we're receiving a greater number of decrease because of all the additional supports we've put in place.
Yeah, today, we actually had training on some restorative practices thing, and then we did our de-escalation training today with our entire staff. So it really talks about how the three major strategies, weight, prompt, and how to help. And it talks about what you can do to restore that behavior between the student and the staff. We also talked today about, like, how we are going to bring the staff together and how we have debriefs about that. So I would say also at Cleveland, specifically, we talk about, we restore first, punish second. So we talked heavily about that in training today, that if suspension's what you want, you're probably not going to get it here at Cleveland, because that's not what we do. We restore the behavior. We teach first, punish second. And so we made that very clear today. So I just wanted my whole staff to hear that for me. So we talked about that today, and we restore first, punish second. So, and oftentimes, I get pushback on that, but we're in the business of teaching, and we use that quote all day today. When a kid has a reading disability, we teach. When a kid has a math disability, we teach. Why can't we say that so quickly with behavior? So we need to do the same thing. So we are heavily into restorative practices. And most principals that I talk to have that same philosophy, and so we're really focusing on restorative practices.
That's awesome. I said last question, but I lied, because there's one more. I just, you know, I think it's great that you said all the buildings have at least one classroom that has decreased behaviors reported across all of our schools. I'm wondering what we're doing to understand behaviors in classrooms that don't show a decrease in referrals? Are we capturing, like, that data in any way? What's happening there that they're not having a decrease in referrals?
Do you want to, can I ask Rouse? Because that's his wheelhouse.
I just want to make sure I understand, classrooms or grade levels? Or either one?
Any, any. I just want to understand if we're capturing why there is not a decrease in behavior.
Yep. So kind of back to your previous question about, like, have we tightened up as far as, like, expectations? While there are anomalies when it comes to consequences, we're much tighter than we were, which now allows us to get a better sense when we do have grade levels or classrooms kind of as outliers. So that work has kind of just started this year, now that we're a little bit tighter. But we've already started to notice some places where we've been able to deploy our district SEBH team to go in and do some additional observations in some specific classrooms and grade levels and buildings to kind of see what's going on. Is it just an odd mix of students, right, at the beginning of the year, that we kind of needed to sort some things out? Or does it go back to instructional practices, or what is kind of going on there? So that's where we're at, at this point with that process. Does that help clarify that?
It does. It does, yeah. And actually, one more question. And then I really think this is the last one. I just, you know, I'm always concerned about vertical articulation and for us to be able to work before and after school with partners. So I'm wondering, when we're looking at restorative practices, are those the same restorative practices that we're using with partner agencies?
I think I can answer most of that question. So we have tailored what we're using for restorative practices in partnership with Kids First. So in that regard, I know we lean on them heavily in some of our buildings as community partner. So in regards to their work, yes, we are aligned. As far as maybe some other community partners that are doing some similar work, I can't, I wouldn't feel confident speaking to that. But I could say, I think that's kind of what they're most known for in our district, and we've worked collaboratively with them to make sure that even if they don't have a representative in the building and we're kind of carrying that, that we're making sure that we're kind of talking the same language, that we're working through the same process. We've been working on tightening that up as well.
Right. And, you know, it's just consistency for kids, too, right? Because if you're saying A, B, and C during the school day, and then after the school day, or somebody else is working on the same thing, and they're saying D, E, and F, you know, that kid is unclear on expectation.
I would say, we have a tanager in our building, so I would say that... Sorry. I would say that we are also working in line with our tanager therapists to make sure that we are working on the same goals with kids, so that there is that continuity, and so we're not changing what we're doing with kids. So I would say we also have a, I can't remember the name, but we have a peer group that our students go to after school, once or twice a week, a group of students from Cleveland. And our counselor heavily makes sure we're communicating what we're doing in both settings.
That's great. Are parents involved in that?
Yeah, they have to give permission for it to happen, so that the peer group can work with the parents. They pick them up after school, they drop them off at home. Parents are all involved.
Great. Thank you.
Now I'm really done.
Okay, I'm sorry, I've got one more. I'm curious about, so at one point in time, you were, there was like a rollout plan of how we were going to implement this in each of the buildings, based on the number of coaches and trainings and all the things. Kind of curious where we are with that across schools, grade levels, and if we're feeling like we can pretty adequately sustain and scale that, based on our earlier predictions.
So we have the three tiers. We have the focused, we have the guided, and then foundational. Focus and guided have additional coaching support with instructional empowerment coaches that come in. This year, all of our teachers, depending if they were guided and focused, received the Model Instruction 201, where they went deeper into the teaming, classroom teaming. And then the rest of the foundational schools received designing interdependent tasks, DIT. So I won't just say DIT, which the foundational and guided schools got last, or the focus and guided schools got last year. So really about helping the teachers be able to design and understand what that looks like in a teaming classroom. So this year, we decreased the amount of coaching, and that's the idea of every year, you're decreasing the amount of coaching and touch points, because eventually, when I worked for Instructional Empowerment, our motto was, "I want to be out of a job." Because our job is to sustainability around the model of instruction, where you guys are taking it over. So that's the goal, as we decrease every year with the needs that we're seeing.
I was just, you know, as a school, remember, I have this information on hand, but as a parent, I haven't seen much communication. I might be at one of those other buildings that's rolling out. I'm curious how we're communicating this with our larger strategic plan, communication plan. These are really exciting things, these goals, and how we're reaching those goals in the classrooms. So curious how we might be communicating that out to parents or community members to showcase that we're reaching these goals and highlighting this type of programming. Are we doing that in certain capacities at different buildings?
All buildings have been putting it out, I think, different things and aspects in social media, highlighting, but as a strategic piece, I don't think we've done that, except for the schools individually have done it.
Okay. Yeah, I think that showcasing the impact of the work would be a great way to put some content out about that. So, thank you. Thanks for all the work you're doing.
Thank you, Dr. Hobson and your team. Good news. Thank you. Moving on to Board Governance. Our next item is a closed session to discuss strategy with council in matters that are presently in litigation or where litigation is imminent, where its disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the governmental body in that litigation pursuant to Iowa Code 21.51(c). Do we have a motion to move into closed session?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Tavinsky.
Aye.
Director Borchning.
Aye.
Director Humble.
Aye.
Director Byers.
Aye.
Director Newman.
Aye.
Vice President Autry. President Garlock.
Aye. The Board will now move to the conference room for a closed session. Thank you.